From the state to begin, even before the bonds are actually sold on the market. Essentially, I won't go into the technical details, but the State Bond Committee would make funds available and then basically issue themselves an IOU from the bond funds once they're actually sold. The only other thing I also wanted to convey is in the discussions at the Senate Finance Committee, because I know we've talked about this in the past, is that there is a lot of legislative support for the governor's proposal for 50% school bond debt reimbursement. In fact, at this morning's Senate Finance hearing, Senator Hoffman indicated that he would like to see the legislature continue to support 100% school bond debt reimbursement. And his rationale, and I won't go in much more detail, but his rationale is that there is a formula out there that ties state funding for rural schools to how much money is put into the school bond debt program. And by virtue that the governor has vetoed all of that funding in the past, the state has not been contributing funding to rural school constructions, which is beginning to now open up the state to potential liability. And therefore, state needs to address rural school construction funding, which then is tied to the amount of funding in school bond debt reimbursement. So that's sort of a long version of trying to tell you that there is a lot of legislative support to continue school bond debt reimbursement. And so just in the interest of time and just trying to cover these topics, quickly I'll stop there and see if there are any questions there.
Questions, Council? Questions at Council Online? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bitney. Appreciate the update. Maybe you can get that house organized for us.
Roger that, sir.
Next item is Incident Management Team COVID-19 update. Dr. Sanders?
Hi.
You're welcome.
We currently have one active -- can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Sorry. We currently have one active case. We are actively vaccinating the community, working with Alonka as well as CCMC. We've got a lot of questions regarding how the vaccine process is being organized. We have a single point of sign-up, which is shared between both entities. The allotment that CCMC has received is from the state, and we are required to follow the state guidelines. In order to really maximize the reach that we have in the community, because Alonka has a more wide net that they can cast and the ability with their tribal allotment to make decisions that are separate from the state guidelines, they are going, following the state guidelines, but trying to reach out to those tiers that are not yet eligible. So we're still following the matrix, just with that group have been able to kind of jump ahead a tier. And we really appreciate that they're doing that for us. At this point today, we are asking everybody that's interested in being vaccinated to please sign up on the website, or they can call 424-3045 to sign up. Having people sign up ahead of when they're eligible helps us to predict and also make requests to the state to get that vaccination. Today, we have 433 individuals that have received their first dose of the vaccine and an additional 128 individuals that have completed the vaccination series. So we have 561 people immunized so far, and over the next two weeks anticipate to get approximately another 300 people immunized. So I feel really fortunate. We're making good headway, and the community is really helping us support this. So thanks, everyone. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, hi, Dr. Sanders. Tom Baylor, just a couple of quick questions. After you receive the second shot, I've been reading different information. There's X amount of days before you will actually be considered immune from the disease. And if you could address that. And then also, I'm assuming that we're all still going to follow the protocols as far as wearing masks and washing hands even after you've had the shot. But also, I read someplace that even if you've had the shot, you can still get the disease and pass it on to somebody else, but you won't get sick. Could you clarify some of those things up, please?
Absolutely. So when you get the shot, basically what the current shot is with the mRNA is we're giving you the little bit of the virus that codes for the spike protein. So the mRNA goes into your body similar to how COVID would go into an individual and then makes that spike protein. It takes some time for your body to develop that immune response. This is normal. This is part of the reason that even for people that have COVID, we see that they don't become symptomatic sometimes for several days. That process just takes along, takes a week or two, and then it takes, even with the second -- sorry. So it takes a week or two before you mount that immune response. And a lot of times, we feel that immune response and feel your body working by getting fever, chills, and those types of symptoms. The second dose, your body's already seen that protein, and so it's a little more quick to respond. And that is when we see that fever and chills, a little bit worse of an effect after the vaccine. And the timing of that is designed so that we maximize that immune response. If we were to give you that second dose within a week or two, your body's still busy responding to that first one. So about two months later is when your body has relaxed that immune response. We show your immune system that protein again, and it can rerespond and create those, create more antibodies. That entire process, on average, most people will have completed or had a pretty good, decent response two weeks after the immunization. So right now, when somebody's immunized, we're saying that approximately two weeks later is when they would be considered, two weeks after the second dose is when they'd be considered fully vaccinated. Now, the vaccine was tested for its ability to prevent somebody from being hospitalized and becoming very sick. Not entirely sure that it prevents, doesn't prevent you from getting COVID, and we don't know how quickly, when COVID, when an individual that's been vaccinated is exposed to COVID, how quickly your immune system destroys that virus without having the ability to spread it. We just don't know right now. It could be that your body's immune system responds really quickly, and we don't shed a lot of virus. Or it could be that you're asymptomatic and can shed. We just don't know. That's why we're asking people to be extra cautious until we've finished, not we, but the scientific community, has finished studying that to make sure that we're not potentially going to still spread this to vulnerable people after we've been immunized. Does that answer your question, Councilman?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. And so basically, even after you've had the shot, you still want to kind of follow all those protocols to protect yourself and others. And that's kind of sums it up, till we know more, right?
Yeah, until we know more. We certainly don't want to give people a false sense of security and then have them go and expose a vulnerable loved one. You know, we've all worked really hard, particularly keeping the most vulnerable, the elderly population, safe during this. We certainly don't want to let that guard down now, just when we're so close to being able to fully protect them.
Thank you.
Any --
Councilman Chairman?
Councilman Chairman?
Yeah, just as a follow-up, and I think I'm going to echo what Tom has said, but again, Dr. Sanders, I'd just like to hear, in knowing what's going on with the national mandates, too, that mask-wearing, hand-washing, social distancing, we should still be practicing all of that even after we all get our vaccinations.
Yes, that is still absolutely the recommendation from the CDC. That's the way that we know that we can protect one another and protect ourselves best is to do those things, make sure we don't keep spreading the virus until we have more information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sanders. Appreciate you calling in tonight.
Thank you.
And we're just bringing the phone back up. I accidentally hung it up. I was getting, that's why I keep my phone here, just in case people in the public are trying to call in on the phone, they can text and let me know. So someone was trying to call in, so just trying to give a quick check. So we'll be taking audience comments on agenda items, and the call-in number is 253-6202. So if you'd like to make any comments on the agenda items this evening, you can call that number, 253-6202. And we're just getting that line active again. So I'll just take this opportunity to mention, under chairpersons and representatives of boards and commissions, the school board is having their evaluation of their superintendent this evening. So they contacted me, or contacted us earlier in the day to let us know that they wouldn't be calling in for a report, and that was why. And I'll mention more to that in my mayor's report. And so, Dr. Sanders, did you want to go ahead with the CCMC report?
Sure, I'd be glad to. CCMC, over the last year, we've been working really hard to improve our ceiling. We know, we've heard from the community. And I think it's pretty well-known that the hospitals had some troubles in the past getting expert billing out. I hope that everybody's noticing a difference in that and noticing a significant improvement.
Sorry, just a second, Dr. Sanders. It was probably my fault. Go ahead. We're just trying to get the audience call-in number squared away. Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. I did want to point out, in the CCMC board meeting from last month, we do have a report that compiles all of the improved equipment and equipment that we have worked really hard to obtain over the 2020. So anybody that's interested in looking at the hospital portion of the COVID response that's outlined very clear in the coordinating packet. And we are just now rolling out both a sliding scale as well as a charity care, which we think will really help impact our ability to provide great care to the community, even for people that are struggling to make ends meet during this challenging time. So I hope people are noticing the changes that we're making, and we're working really hard to continue to improve. I appreciate when people let me know how, what their perception is, or if they're having any problems, that way we can get it fixed. That's all I have for you tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on CCMC, Council? Okay, thank you, Dr. Sanders. We have a caller. Okay, we're back to audience comments, and we have a caller on the line. If you could state your name and residence for the record. And you have three minutes. I heard him for a second. Caller?
Kenny, can you hear me? Maybe I can call your phone. Hello?
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 Oh, hey, Kenny, we've got you now. So yeah, just your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes.
Yeah, this is Ken Jones, 514 Sunny Side Drive. And I just wanted to comment regarding agenda item about the Pink Salmon Disaster Funds and the harbor improvements. I just urge Council to support this. I think they're both going to be great projects for our community to help, you know, benefit the Sane Fleet and those that were affected by the 2016 disaster, both with the water project and the much-needed rebuild on the three-stage dock. Sorry, there's kind of like an echo.
You sound good on this end.
Anyway, thank you, and yeah, thank you, and I just urge you guys to support that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'll just pause for a minute in case there's any other callers. Okay, we don't have anybody calling in at the moment, so we'll move on. There's a Student Council Representative Report in the packet from Madeline Roehm Hilt. We don't have any consent agenda items, or minutes, or bids. So reports of officers, under the mayor's report. I did stop by the school district boards, or the school board meeting earlier. I just, both as mayor and manager of Cordova Electric, I've had a real good working relationship with the superintendent over the years, and just wanted to mention some of my observations. And the board, while I was there, wanted to convey to the council how much they appreciated that, the support for that HVAC repair. Said it's really freed up their maintenance man to fix other things. And just in general, one of my comments was, the council has been very supportive of getting all those capital, prioritize those capital projects, the leaky windows at Echols, the gym floor. And I know city staff and public works and staff have been helping, and we just haven't heard about those for the last couple of years because they've all gotten fixed. So they wanted to pass that appreciation on to council. And also, wanted to acknowledge Prince William Sound Economic Development District, Kristin Carpenter, and also Kathy Renfell at the Chamber have been putting a lot of effort into really coordinating comments around the summer ferry schedule and backing it with data and so forth. So just want to remind the public that the summer schedule's open for comments through February 7th. And I know, for my part, one of the things that's worked well in the past is having multi-year schedules. So it's, the schedule can look great this year, but it'd be nice to extend that out for three to five years, like we'd asked. I know that we've got the Aurora fixed, so. That's all I had, unless there's any questions. Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, I guess more of a comment going back to the public comment period, and we have one on the end. I think maybe just letting the public know that we do have room for them to come to this meeting. There is availability to be here and keep our six-foot distance. So if somebody can't get through on this phone we're having trouble with, they can come down to this meeting here tonight and make comments and listen. So we've gotten some comments before about their not being able to speak, but we are open for business here. So I just thought I'd throw that out there as we move forward.
Thank you, Councilman Baylor. And we do have seating in the audience, and the seating is spaced. And you reminded me, I was going to mention that for those councilmen that are on the line, we have city staff here, Planner Stavag and Harbor Master Chanelah, Public Works Director Greenwood, and Police Chief Taylor, and also Zachary Smith with Cordova Times. I always appreciate press coverage. So just wanted to let you know, Council, and then also Curtis is a secret weapon, if questions come up later in the agenda. City Managers' Report.
Thank you. I'll start by speaking to some projects that are obviously, we just were discussing. One is the harbor and also the school. And I'm going to defer to Tony, our Harbor Master, to speak to some of the progress that we're making and some of the projects that are in the works, grant funding and other things. We have a team of folks with the Harbor Master, with our Public Works Department, and with our staff in City Hall that are working really, really hard to make sure that we succeed in getting funding for that harbor project come hook or crook. So as you heard from our lobbyist, John Bitney, earlier, he's working hard on behalf of the harbor, exclusively on behalf of the harbor in the legislature. And we have some other projects in the works, and I'd like Tony to come up and at least update you on where we're at with that.
Tony Chanelah, Harbor Master. As you can see in the packet, Helen provided you this list that we did up, there are some new things that we've been working on. The Port Infrastructure Development Grant, we talked to Robert Bouchard the other day, Sam and Curtis, myself, had a phone conference with him to see if we qualified for that. Sounds like it's a very good fit for us. It's another one we're going to be shooting for for that. As you can see, working, talked with Shirley Kelly with the EDA. We got Solstice AK contracted to work on our NEPA environmental issues. When we had a build meeting conference, they said that was one thing we were lacking, and it's permitting is one of the things that we need to kind of get moving. As long as we get moving forward with it, that will look a lot better, and our possibilities are greater that way. Also, we're looking with Northern Economics to get, see what they're going to cost us to do a cost-benefit analysis and update the one we have. That was another issue with ours. They thought it was a little overreaching with the one we had in the build grant. So still shooting for the build grant, still shooting for the Tier 1. Hopefully, like John Bitney says, we'll get that big bond and be able to get some money out of that towards the harbor there. So FEMA is others that, we've looked at, I don't know, probably six or seven different ones that we can go with right now. Some of them don't offer a lot of money for the money we have to put up, you know, and the money it costs just to do them. But the build and the PID grant, those look pretty good right now. So we're still going to shoot for those.
Questions, Council? Councilman Gleason, then Baylor, and then I'll go online.
The, you guys are, it looked like you're going to purchase a new crane with part of this money?
With the --
Relief money?
With the salmon relief money, yes.
And then you'll get another one from the Marketing Association?
Yep, that's what we're hoping on. We're also, the plan is to rebuild one, to have one rebuilt on the loading dock. We haven't decided which one. We'd like to take one of the old rebuilt ones and move that out to the city dock to lessen the pressure inside the harbor, and then have the newer cranes inside the harbor.
Councilman Baylor?
The email we got from City Manager as far as update on the harbor and grants and everything was very timely, and I appreciate that. There was some good information there, because there's been a little bit of, there seems to be a little more talk about the harbor this winter, and I was able to, you know, convey that to several people that talked to me, like, we do have things, we are moving forward. I'm wondering about if that couldn't be part of the packet so people could see, you know, kind of behind the scenes what you're doing. I think that was very helpful and timely, like I said. So that was some good information. I appreciate that. But I think leaving it in the packet or putting it in the Cordova conversation, I think we're lacking there as far as letting the people know what progress we're making or trying to make. Thank you.
I'd like to say that it takes a lot of staff time. It's not, it sure isn't just me working on this. Everyone up here, there's multiple people working on it, and it is a lot of staff time. So I appreciate the help that I'm getting just to get this moving.
Yeah, and that's good for the community to see that and hear that.
I think one of the things that I want to say is that I feel very, very positive about the hard work and the positive feedback we're getting from these funding sources, that these are good fits and that we do have a good project. And as Tony described, we're doing everything we can to make sure that the applications that we're submitting are as rock solid as they possibly can be. So we did have an opportunity to meet with the build grant staff, and they informed us of the weaknesses. And the really great news is that our project was in the top 20% of the projects that were submitted. It got to the Secretary of Transportation's desk and was only not funded because of some of the deficiencies that Tony described. So we're well on our way to plugging those holes and making sure that the application is solid. And staff has also researched some other opportunities that we were unaware of, or maybe just didn't quite know how it would mesh and fit with the build grant. So we're looking at other possibilities if this doesn't come through. Priority for staff.
Awesome. Any questions for Council Online?
Councilman Chairman?
Councilman Chairman?
More of a comment, actually, than a question, but kudos on the NEPA work. That will hold you up no matter what, and I'm really glad to see that's moving forward. And I think also, going back and asking what we did wrong, or maybe we did too wrong, but it wasn't, weren't strong enough on the build grant, but it's a great move, because that only is going to put you in a better light as you move forward. And I just really think that staff is doing an admirable job of kind of digging into the waters here and figuring out what we can do. And I think we're going to have a really slick proposal, and listen to John Bitney. You know, he's invaluable to us at the state level. So I think even though we're working our way more into EDA and Feds, we need all of it to make it successful, plus we need to commit ourselves. And I'm just really impressed with everything that's being done right now. That's it.
Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, and the other thing I wanted to bring up, and actually, Candidate Jones, I've read his little article, he brought it up, but the 2013 harbor plan, so that's eight years old. I don't know if I've ever really sat down and read it or seen it. I don't know if council as a group, have we ever reviewed it and had any comment on it? And if we have, then maybe I'll do it by myself, but I wonder if council wants to maybe get that on the agenda, just so we can all look at it. And keep in mind, when we look at it, that means the public can look at it, too. But I guess I would ask, is it still relevant? It's eight years old, it's still your guide? Are you guys working on it, or?
It was more of a self-filled development plan. Yeah, so I mean, it morphed into, I mean, I was first, my first year, full year in the position, it morphed into kind of an everything, you know, there was parts in the harbor, but I would say that it probably couldn't hurt to review it, that's for sure, because it's been quite a while. But yeah, it was more aimed just towards self-fill development, like the fill itself.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not what you're --
Yeah, I mean, we got into some discussion on it, but yeah.
So what you're focusing now is kind of, correct me if I'm wrong, is kind of rebuilding and revitalizing what we have?
Yeah, I mean, if we can get done what the docks and the floats and everything, and then work from there to build the self-fill would be nice later on. Unless we can get, go ahead, sorry.
Well, the hot button issue and the rumor mill is the whole Forest Service, and I think actually the plan zoning took that up. Is that part of, is that in a plan someplace, if we get a fuel dock and moving that? Or is that just, we're just flying by seat of our pants on that? Is there a plan?
Our Harbor Master Plan that we have, that Dale Muma actually did, has, in there, talks about expansion to the north side of the harbor. If we got huge pot of money, we would maybe move the airplane float over towards that area once the Science Center was gone. So there's movement, but it's not something that we have that says we're going to have a fuel dock or not have Forest Service or have Forest Service, whatever in it. So it just talks about an area over there.
Okay, so that might be something you guys, the Harbor Commission, needs to look at and kind of come up with a plan before there's any discussion about anybody moving. Okay, that was one of the calls I was getting, like, what are you guys doing? I was, I don't know, I haven't seen a plan, so I can't comment. And I always would go back to that and encourage you guys to get a master plan of your thoughts so we'd all understand it. Thank you.
Sure. Other questions, Council?
Councilman Chairman?
Councilman Chairman?
So just to follow up on that, I feel ignorant that I do not remember a 2013 harbor plan, and that might be just to a good FYI, that we could send out to council, and I'll go back and look at the comprehensive plan. But I think, well, that would be good background, and then if we could ask or gently request that the Harbor Commission take a look at all of that and give us maybe some of their recommendations in the future, that would sure help.
Yeah, I was just trying to look on the city website. I know that development plan was on the city's website for a long time. I think it still is there. If you go right on the homepage of the city, off on the right-hand side, it has some of the major plans, including like Crater Lake and stuff, but that South Phil development plan is on the website for everyone to look at. I've pulled it up a couple of times myself, so. Other questions, Council?
Okay, thank you. Manager's report continued.
Continued. I also want to update you, Alex, with the school board, with the school district. And I met, and we have now got on the pending agenda, we've added an item. I think it's been on there, but now it's firm, where there will be a meeting with the school board and city council after the election is certified in the spring, so first meeting in April. So I just wanted to alert you of that because I know there's been some conversations about trying to have a meeting so that there's good communication. And so that is definitely inked on the calendar at this point in time, unless you guys have another idea about how you want to proceed or have other ideas. But that gives us an opportunity to meet the new school board and for them to meet council members and discuss issues of mutual concern, and that's on the works. But I also am scheduling regular meetings with Alex so that we have an opportunity to prevent any misunderstandings or discrepancies of understanding, so moving forward with that. Another item pending agenda, I have heard that we want to try to work our way through that. And maybe Sam could speak for a moment because we are well on our way to crossing some items off that list. And Sam can speak to some progress on the impound lot.
So my favorite lot in the whole town is the impound lot. And we have pulled out the memo that has been given in the past. I have distributed it to department heads. And next week, we are going to meet and have a discussion, probably recreate a memo, maybe do a PowerPoint so we can talk through some of these options and ideas and just bring it for you. But I really need to wait till the first meeting in March because the second thing I want to talk about is the mugups that we're doing for the landfill equipment. So I have, we have one tomorrow, and then we have one on the 24th. So fitting all that and the harbor and everything in between, it just, the timeframe would be best for the first meeting in March for the impound lot. So tomorrow night, if y'all want to come to another meeting, we're doing a mugup from 5:30 to 6:30. It'll be Erin, Muma, and Chris Boland and I and Curtis. And we have a PowerPoint and just trying to educate people on what exactly proposition was, one is, and what it'll do for the refuse department.
Is that here, Sam?
Yep.
Okay.
And this side of the room tomorrow night.
YouTube?
Cookies, too. No YouTube tomorrow because we're pushing the wall close. But we are also doing one on the 24th, and we'll YouTube that one up. We wanted to do one early for the early voters, try to catch them, and then one right before the election.
Awesome. Any questions, counsel?
This is Councilman Schaefer.
Councilman Schaefer.
Yeah, I mean, is there any way that you could film it and then post it later? It just might be nice to start getting that message out sooner rather than later for people that can't attend in person.
I can talk to Andrew. I don't have that skill set, but maybe he does.
It's not a ton of work, but I mean, I don't know.
We're definitely going to make sure that we communicate broadly and thoroughly if possible, just to help people understand what that proposition does and the importance of it. So we'll have Curtis and Andrew get together, and we'll do our best to get that up sooner if we can.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
And I just have one more thing. We've had some staff changes, and I just wanted to give you an update. Let's see, where do I begin? Okay, Ken Fay has left City Employment, and Dean, I just spaced his last name.
I know Dean.
Yeah, you guys all know Dean. Our intrepid finance helper has, who's pulled us out of many of a pickle, has agreed to help out in the interim to close out 2020. I want to apologize to counsel and community. We have not had an accurate or up-to-date financial report for some months, and we hope to have something for all of you by the beginning of March, mid-March at the latest. There's quite a bit of work to be done on that to get that information to you. But Dean is well on his way to making that happen. I also wanted to let you know that Laura Cloward, who has experience with city government before, but also is a HR professional, is working with us on making sure that all of our HR policies and all of our job descriptions and everything that we need is tight and accurate and up to speed. And she's been a really fabulous resource for us. So she's now working on a very part-time basis to help with that. And I'm also taking the opportunity of having vacancies in HR, finance to restructure how we do our financial business here. And I think I will bring that to you all and as soon as it's finalized and have approval from, or maybe not finalized, as soon as I have approval on how we can proceed with the collective bargaining agreement as a backstop for some of those positions and also PERS and other things. So I'm well on my way to working on that. And I think we'll provide city with a much more efficient and accurate accounting for pretty much everything and a much better HR department. So I'll keep you posted on that, but that's well underway and should have that finalized here in the next little bit. And we do, will be posting our vacancy for our Parks and Recs Director. Susie Herschel is leaving us mid-March, and that position will go live on Monday. That's it for me, thank you.
Any questions for the manager counsel? Councilman Baylor?
Oh, boy. So the, I don't know if the CBD question ever got, a policy ever got addressed or corrected. So I don't know, you're shaking your head, if that'll get addressed, I hope.
Yes, it's part of our personnel. There's many holes in our personnel policies, and we are tackling them and should be in good stead.
And I commend you for that direction that you're going, getting somebody in here that, that's very good. Appreciate that.
Other questions, counsel? Okay, thank you. Did you have anything to share on the clerk's report, Tina?
The election is coming up in a month, March 2nd. And I believe early voting starts February 9th. And Susan's back, and she's been working on the ballot. And I've been back working on the 2021 assessment, so good to see her back.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I'm going to revert to the mayor's report for a minute and give you my deer-in-the-headlights look. I've been extremely busy at work the last couple of weeks and had my own board meeting last week. And I completely spaced wrapping up the managers summarizing that evaluation and getting with Melina and having that ready for the executive session tonight. So I just want to mention when we get to that item, we could certainly go into executive session, discuss it. But my apologies, I just dropped right completely off my radar, so. Anything else on, any other questions on any of the reports of officers?
I just mentioned that we did get a school report this time.
Yes, we did get a school student council representatives' report this time in the packet with, from Madeline Romehill there, so appreciate that. And we have correspondence counsel, any comments on correspondence?
I liked your letter about the HACRE, good letter.
So it's hard to hear on the mic.
I just said I liked your letter.
Thank you, I had some help with that. And we actually got a really nice response from them that we'll get in correspondence for the next packet, but. Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, again, I like layer two, but I also give a shout out to, is it Joshua Pearson for the school? Knowing what the HAVAC system, but everything I've heard, he's doing a great job of getting that school maintenance turned around and really appreciate his efforts and what he's doing. We've heard nothing but good things, so.
You kind of forget what you don't hear. It seems like it's been a long time since the school's come to the council asking for capital improvements. Other questions or comments on correspondence counsel online?
No, Councilman Sherman?
Councilman Sherman.
I had, I just wanted to comment that I read Ms. Romehill's letter earlier when we had received it and have been contemplating it. And I think her points are interesting, but I think we know where we're at in terms of a national and federal mask mandate and state mandate for masking. And I guess that's kind of where I'm still leaning. And then I also wanted to compliment Josh Pearson. He's been doing a great job at the school. And it was really fun to read his response to the HVAC support, so that was great.
Other comments on correspondence counsel? Okay, hearing none for ordinances and resolutions. We have resolution 02-21-04, a resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, supporting the 2016 Pink Salmon Disaster Relief Funds Application and Projects Identified by the Harbor Commission.
So moved.
Have a motion, Baylor, second Gleason, would you like to speak to your motion, Councilman Baylor?
I guess my question got answered with the second hoist. I know we had an offer of a hoist, but we're going to get two of them, it sounds like, so. That's all, I support it.
Counselman Gleason, to your second.
It was actually Allison, but...
Oh, sorry.
I'm in support.
Giving you credit. Councilman Allison, to your second.
Yeah, I think enough people have looked at this and it's a good recommendation, so I support it.
I guess at my age, I shouldn't trust my ears or my eyes. Discussion, Councilman Sherman?
Yes, I'm in favor of this motion.
Okay, and sorry, Tina, I missed, was Councilman Gard in the roll?
Yes, yes.
Oh, discussion, Councilman Gard?
I'm in support, these are projects we spoke of before, and they're good projects and we need them, so let's do them. I'm in support.
Vice Mayor Meyer?
I didn't hear her.
Yeah, I'm in support of this. I did have one question about the Crater Lake project. Do you know how much that would cost? Do we have it in the works, kind of where we're at with Crater Lake water?
We'll defer to Sam, she's coming to the mic.
I had an informal conversation with the engineer. We do need engineering on this project, secure the pipe and the valve and DC and those kinds of things. So nope, I don't have a price quote, I don't have anything like that. We talked about how much money was there. He felt like it should be substantial. But I will say that this project is number one priority right now for the Water Department. Just the drop in stress level during the summer will be amazing when that siphon is in there. So if we go over that, we'll get it out of the depreciation fund, we'll make that project happen.
Yeah, I think that would be a good project. We have talked about water quite a bit since I've been on council, and I feel good to have another water source for the pink salmon season. I'm in support of it, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Schaefer?
Hi, yeah, I'm also in support of this. Yes, they're both high priority, important projects. Both for the Harbor and the Water Department. And I guess if the Crater Lake project does become more expensive, then the funds that are available here, potentially we could look into partnerships with the processors and whatnot because that's really when the water becomes an issue, is when the pink salmon are being processed. So that could maybe be a potential partnership.
The partnership's called rate setting.
Yeah, or that.
So all counsel have spoken in favor, it sounds like you're ready to vote? Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yes.
David Gleason?
Yes.
Resolution passes, 7-0?
Okay. No unfinished business on the agenda tonight. Next item is discussion of COVID-19 response. And again, counsel puts this on the agenda also so that the public can speak to any items during the pandemic because it becomes an agenda item for audience comment. But is there any COVID-19 discussion, counsel? Okay, hearing none. Pending agenda, capital improvements lists, calendar and elected and appointed officials lists. We do still have a vacancy on Parks and Planning and Zoning. Sorry if there's public interest in that. We'd certainly love to have a full planning commission, have lots of projects potentially creeping up in the near future. So it's really good to, it's a great service to the community to serve on that commission. And as Manager Howarth mentioned, and I've had a chance to meet with her a couple of times over the last couple of weeks, staff's really, she is really torn in to the pending agenda of staff to work to get some of those items off there. And I know counsel expressed that desire earlier, but any items for pending agenda? Councilman Baylor, then Gleason?
Yeah, well, a couple, several things. But one, just a recommendation for staff, whether they thought it was worthwhile, but this, the public workshop for the Baylor here that you're going to have, would it be wise to put that on our agenda, just like we did the COVID thing? And then maybe have a little blip in there and then that, every meeting we had, that would allow the public to ask us questions and keep it out front, would that? I'm just kind of, I'm not trying to make more work for you guys, but just a suggestion. It might be nice to have out there, so if anybody wants to ask questions. I'd like to recommend to counsel that we put the investment firm, that whole thing on the pending agenda. I think we should put that on our next agenda. I know I did ask, and several of us agreed, asked for it for the investment policy. We didn't get that for this meeting, that was requested. I think we requested to have Craig Coots put on the investment committee, that didn't happen. So I think if we put this on the agenda, we can sort this out. If we, if counsel supports this, the majority counsel supports this, and we'll give direct direction to the managers so we can get this moving forward. And if we don't have support, then we can get it off of our agenda. Otherwise, it's just sitting here languishing, I think it needs a little shove to get done. The other one I see on here is the refuse. I'm not sure what that was all about, how we do it, residential, neighborhood dumpsters work session. That was for June of 2020. Do we need an update? Is there questions on the refuse? Let's put it on there and let's get that one figured out. Maybe the public had questions, I don't know what that one is all about. But if there's, somebody on counsel needed that, then let's put that on the agenda. Let's start putting a couple of these things on and getting them taken care of. And I think the, yeah, there was another one. Oh, the city addressing, manager to report back with recommendations after January 2021. Well, it's after January 2021, so maybe we should put the addressing on next meeting and see where we're at with that. And if staff needs direction, we'll move it forward. So I guess those are my thoughts, it takes concurrence from everybody to do that, but that's what I would like to see happen.
Manager Howarth?
Yes, just for counsel, we have gone through, staff has gone through this list, and we have, as I said, started working on those things that are, have been identified priorities by counsel. Investment, I'm well on my way towards getting information that you need. It'll be at the next council meeting, so I just wasn't able to get that all together for this meeting. I've talked to the attorney about number three. And we're getting, I'll just have clarifying language for you as what it says in code, how that works.
language for you as what it says in code, how that works. Title four, I'm working with the attorney on that. We'll have recommended language, we'll have the actual title four language, but a recommended policy that we're working on that will be brought forward to you at the next meeting. Impound lot, as Sam said, that will come forward in March. And let's see, city addressing, we are actively looking into that and getting new quotes and bids, and we'll come back to you with information on that. And then, so that, those items will be on either the next meeting agenda or the following one, but before the end of February, those items, I hope, will be off the list and we'll be well on our way to resolving.
Councilman Gleason?
Yeah, I spoke to Bert Adams, and he's going to be in town Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And I asked if he'd be willing to give council an update on, you know, tribal health care in Cordova. And he said he would. So if other council members would like to meet with him either Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, here or over the phone, he requested it be an executive session, but he would like to give us a report. Someone else ran it by Helen, but.
Available any of those days?
Yeah, and Greg Meyer would also, it'd be nice to have Greg here.
So is that a special meeting, council, or?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how, what it would be called, but yeah, just a meeting where we would have him give us a report, and he actually requested it be an executive session, so.
That's a good meeting.
Okay.
And the reason I'm saying is he only going to be here, I guess, for three days. We can, we don't have to meet with him if it's like too soon.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of the, because you have, you have the city governance meeting with the Director of NVE. I'm just thinking of how to frame that. I mean, council can call it a special meeting and invite a guest to speak, I guess, so. And if it wants to be in an executive session, we just have to follow our protocols for, you know, no action being taken, what the reasons you go into executive session and so forth, so. And, okay, is that the will of council, or?
I would like to.
Been a long time. Councilman Sherman?
I just wanted to follow up in that I was happy about all the things that we're working on in terms of the pending agenda, and I think all of that is a lot to tackle. And if we could get through even half of that, I'd be thrilled to death. The update from NVE and CCMC in regard to the sale, I don't know if that has to happen that fast, that I would be available. And I would rather have staff, I would rather not burden staff with tons of stuff, and I would rather have them kind of chunk some of these things off our list, which I think we can do pretty easy if we just give them some time and opportunity to take care of that. I'm out.
I wonder if requesting an update from Greg at the next meeting would be, would that help, or?
You mean at the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, we can hear from Greg, but I think hearing from Bert would probably be more informative. I don't know how many times Greg and Bert have met during this last year. We just haven't heard from Bert in so long, and he's got his new tribal members. But we don't have to do it Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday. I'm just saying he's actually going to be here and we could, but if, you know, we can always put it off.
I'm just not sure what the code says about calling special council meetings, if it's a seven-day notice, or I'd have to figure out what to do.
24 hours.
24 hours. So, okay, is that the will of council then? I'm hearing some council, yes, some no.
Um, just Councilmember Gard, I'm all in favor of getting any updates we can get, but at some point in time, we need to do something out of executive session on this. We've done nothing except executive session on the hospital CC, or the hospital NVE stuff for forever. And I've regularly got questions in the past about, you know, can you do anything in the public so everybody knows generally what's going on?
Well, that's a good question, Councilman Gard, and Susan's throwing me a lifeline here, and she's concerned about executive session and what the reason would be for, for exactly that reason, so.
Financial.
Yeah, let me, I can get with Susan and just see, look at the calendar and then make sure that that's, Bert's amenable to that, and we can just correspond with council accordingly. It sounds like there's enough councilmen that would like to do that, and I forget how many it takes to call a special meeting. And yeah, Councilman Allison?
Yeah, I think if you're going to talk to Bert, ask him if he's got anything.
To share?
Yeah, anything worthwhile to share. Everybody don't want to call him in and have everybody come in and tell us.
Well, I, yeah, and that's frankly why I'm pausing a little bit, too, because in, with my other hat, we have a facility that they're using right now, and I've had some informal discussions, and it just doesn't sound like it's, that there's any mature or anything really to share, but we can reach out and get something back to council, though. And if there's, whether there is something to update or a conversation, so. Okay, other pending agenda items?
We didn't really get an answer to my first suggestion.
Yeah, we didn't, so.
As far as the financial update investor is, I just feel that we should put it on the agenda, and if the majority of council feels that we should move forward, then we give direction and move forward. If the majority of council wants to stay on autopilot, then we take it off the agenda.
And I will have information to support an agenda item for the next meeting.
Okay. So it sounds like it's on the agenda. Councilman Gleason?
No, I was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if you were.
I was in support of what Tom was saying.
Okay, anything else, council? Okay, we'll go back to audience participation, and that number again is 253-6202. That calling number again is 253-6202. And while we're waiting for any calls to come in from the public, I'll just go through, we can start with council comments, and I'll start with Councilman Schaefer.
No comments. Thanks, everyone.
Hey, Councilman Allison?
Yeah, if, it probably didn't, any agenda, but since the election is in a month, can we get started on the parks evaluation? I know we're not finishing the management evaluation, but if that's how it looks.
Yeah.
If we could, we need to get them both done before, before any potential change of, of the county.
That's a yes.
Just to comment regarding executive session, it doesn't look like we're prepared to have that tonight, but just to make sure it's clear to everybody, it's not being postponed because some big controversy or anything.
No.
People are good to get done, so we're going to have to postpone it.
We are not changing managers.
At least not because council chooses to, right? Councilman Gleason?
Just thanks to staff for their reports during the meeting, and thanks for our one calling.
Councilman Baylor?
Yeah, thanks, everybody. And I would, my earlier comments, I would encourage the Harbor Commission to come up with more of a plan, master plan, in regards to the potential for a fuel dock in the harbor and moving people around. Like I said, I've heard a lot of scuttlebutt about that, but there's, there is no plan, so without a plan, you can't really comment or move forward with anything, so. And thanks to everybody.
Councilman Sherman?
Thank you, Mayor Copeland. I wanted to thank our harbor staff for the graph that they sent out about the travel list. It was really interesting, and I find it fascinating, and it would be lovely to tie it into fish catch, fish, whatever, you know, how the season goes, but really interesting to look at. Also wanted to thank all the staff who helped. I asked a question last week about the school ordinance and meeting with the school board, and I know staff did a lot of background on that, and I really wanted to thank them for that. And I hope that we can agree to meet with school board, the school board, at least twice a year. I think it would be invaluable to us and really build a great team relationship with them. I want to say that I know John Bitney is expensive, but he's worth every single penny, and his report tonight was invaluable, and I know he's doing us a lot of good down there in June. And I also wanted to compliment the medical MRT response team. I know there's been a lot of chatter on Facebook about vaccinations, how this is all going, and they're all following the letter of the law, which is so amazing and so encouraging. And we all have to be patient, we'll get vaccinated where we can. Incredibly, I am incredibly complimentary towards the way they have handled some of the hassles and comments that have come up. And I think everybody's comment on the ferry schedule and, let's see, my last notes. Thanks to Sam and the crew for everything regarding the information on this loan and vote that we're looking at, because I've been getting lots of questions from constituents, and Sam and the crew have been great at responding to me, to help me answer them, so I really appreciate that. And I hope everybody becomes an educated voter on that bond, on that issue, so. And I think, I think that's it for me.
Councilman Gard?
I'd like to thank all the staff for everything they've done, for helping us figure out how to spend other people's money, for the bonding issue that was just spoken of, for the harbor, or for the waste department, for the refurbishment of the harbor that we're looking at funding sources now. These are the kind of things that impact our bottom line hugely. So thanks a lot to the staff and all the work they've been putting in on that. Other than that, I don't think I have a lot of comments.
Hey, Vice Mayor Meyer?
No comments. Thanks, thanks, everyone.
Okay, I'll revert to mayor's report one more time for a second. Councilman Baylor reminded me, I did meet with Forest Service Ranger, District Ranger on Friday for about three hours, and some CEC stuff, but also a lot of city-type stuff. And I just plan on meeting with Manager Howard, too, so an important organization in the community. And just in general, we try to have leadership meetings about twice a year, and we just haven't done that for about a year and a half now because of pandemic and so forth, but. So the next item on the agenda is the executive session item, but I'll just check, we still didn't have any calls from audience. Okay, thank you. Councilman Allison?
Yeah, a little of the new information that we don't have backup information, I'd like to do here.
Second. Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned. And.